Good, good late afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the court call a roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Laloie, Councilmember Telemontes, Councilmember Valenzuela, Councilmember Maple, Vice Mayor Guetta, Councilmember Jennings, Mayor Protem Vang, Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good evening and good afternoon, everyone. Councilmember Telemontes, would you give us the honor of leading us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes. All right. So, please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, to the Nisong people, the Southern Maidu, Valley, and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Winton peoples, and the people of the Wiltamrantria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples, history, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Telemontes. All right, we have a very, very special presentation here today, and I understand I missed the pictures up here, but that's okay. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Vang to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I am just so, so proud to have the opportunity to recognize our amazing scholars at Susan B. Anthony Elementary School. This has been a year in the making, a year-long project of them sharing their stories and really showcasing the importance of storytelling and record-keeping of our diverse histories to really learn and build community. It brings me a lot of joy, a lot of pride for our community and our city to really be able to see for the first time Hmong traditional clothing and culturally significant artifacts that's being celebrated right here at Sacramento City Hall, which I mentioned earlier to the student, that it is the People's Hall. This building belongs to you. It's your building, no one else's. And so I want to make sure that each and every one of you know that you belong here and that this is your building. As many of you know, California is actually home to the largest Hmong population in the United States with over 96,000 Hmong Americans, and Sacramento actually is the largest city in California with the Hmong population nearly around 30 residents. Susan B. Anthony, which was in District 7 in Detroit community, is in the heart of South Sacramento, and Susan B. Anthony is unique, one, because I was a community organizer there, but also because SBA is actually a very special school. It has a Hmong dual-language program, and it was actually the first Hmong immersion program west of the Mississippi River. So we have definitely a gem in South Sacramento. Last year, you'll hear a little bit from our city staff, from Marcia. Last year, the City, the Center of Sacramento History had an opportunity to work with our 5th and 6th graders at Susan B. Anthony to really imagine what an exhibit could look like. And so I really encourage you to take a look at the gallery right out here at the lobby. It's going to be there for a few weeks, I think a few months. I'll have city staff share a little bit about it, but just really excited because this exhibit really embodies the power of storytelling and really just the beauty and diversity of what makes Sacramento so great. And really inviting all of my colleagues and everyone watching council meeting tonight, you know, if you're around downtown or City Hall, please stop by to see the gallery, all done by our amazing 5th and 6th grader from South Sacramento in Detroit, and I'm just so, so proud of them. And with that, I'll hand it over to, I think, Ms. Moa. Have you come up and say a few words, and also our city staff to come up as well, right? Yeah. I do have a resolution as well, but I want an opportunity for you to come up and share a little bit about your experience.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and City Manager. So I'm Marsha Iman, your City Historian, in case you didn't know you had one. So I am proud to be part of the Center for Sacramento History, and this was an outreach project that, yes, was a year in the making because we had to work with the students. They started at the beginning of the year last year and completed it at the end of the school year, and then it took us, what was it, three months, Stacy, to put the exhibit together, so, which was a pleasure. And this is Stacy Cox, who's right there, was the curator of the exhibit, and it was a pleasure from the very beginning. Our goal was to reach out to the school, and part of this was for the kids to have the experience to interview their families and so forth, but for them to think about what's important for them as well, and then collecting those objects and them telling the story. So it's their voices, it's not ours interpreting this. And I want to really thank Principal Moa and the staff, Richard and Poa, because you guys were great, and this wouldn't happen unless the school really went all out for it. So thank you, and Principal Moa.
Can't see without my glasses, but I can't see with my glasses either, so I'm sure some of you understand that. So, good evening, Mayor Steinberg, Mayor Protem Vang, Vice Mayor Guetta, City Council Members and Chamber guests. My name is Bo Moa. I am the principal at Susan B. Anthony Elementary School, which houses the first Hmong dual-language, as Mayor Protem has already mentioned, program in the West Coast in Sacramento City Unified School District. So this project has given our scholars the opportunity to learn about their families and their identity, and I want to thank Mayor Protem Vang and her staff for their support, and especially for her connecting, making that connection for us with District, with the historic District Manager, Marsha Iman, and Stacy Cox, who guided the project and the process of gathering artifacts and writing these stories that our students have written about themselves, and then also displaying their stories here at City Hall. So thank you, Ms. Iman and Ms. Cox, for allowing our scholars to have this really unique experience, learning experience, and then I hope that everyone who comes through City Hall will really, you know, who comes through to view this exhibit will learn about our scholars and their families, and then also will take some things that are important away from what it is in the Hmong culture. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any comments from, any comments from other members? I know, I just got to say something. It's the mayor, just how, how my heart is just filled with such joy to see you all here and to see these young people and to, I have your book and to be able to read what you wrote and to have it displayed at City Hall for many months. And Marsha, thank you so much to you and your team and the adults, the parents at Susan B. Anthony. You know, this is, we talked earlier today about the fact that this is a really sad time in our country, and it's a sad time for the Asian Pacific Islander community in California and in Sacramento by extension. And so this is the, this is the other side, the good side of life, of inclusion, of our great diversity, of celebration of young people about all that is, all that is possible and all that is good. And so, young people, we told you downstairs, this is your building, right? You own this building, and you are never a visitor here. You come here as the owners of this city, this country, because you represent all that's hopeful and all that's good. Thank you for making our day. Thank you. Rick?
Thank you, Mayor. So the mayor and your council member, Councilwoman Mai Vang, have said some incredible things tonight about the school and what you've accomplished, and I can't wait to read every single letter that's in that book. I'm looking forward to reading what you said today because tomorrow it will become a part of history, and many more people will read it for generations to come to understand how you felt about your experience at Susan B. Anthony Elementary School, the first dual-immersion Hmong school in the entire region of Sacramento. And so I'm really happy about that. I really loved representing Susan B. Anthony when it was in my district, but I can say to you without question, you have a great council member in Councilwoman Mai Vang, and she will do a great job. She will do a better job than I ever did for you. And so I just want to let you know, you don't lose anything by losing me to her. So I just want to let you know that, but I am so proud to have you here today to be in the city of Sacramento. For those who were bold enough to come and sit in these seats, I want you to look at the pictures, I want you to look at them every single day, and one day, when you finish college, I want you to come back and claim your seat. You will run the city of Sacramento, and I will be an old man sitting in my chair saying, I remember when they sat in that seat for the very first time, and now they are setting policy for the city of Sacramento. So again, congratulations, thank you for everything. Councilmember Vang, good job, incredible job today, glad to be on your team. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I also want to, you know, extend some accolades here to a great council member that represented Susan B. Anthony for many years, and the Mayor Protemp, who is now the representative. And as I mentioned to the teachers and the parents before and all of the students, you know, my son also goes to a dual-immersion language school, and how important it is to, at a young age, instill pride in one's culture, one's language, one's traditions, because that'll help them throughout their life. And unfortunately, in our country, for a long time, we looked, we frowned upon that. And I think if anything we've learned right now, that this next generation, it's their pride and their identity is going to be what makes them strong Americans here, that help us all in our community. And with that, particularly in these difficult times, it's more important that we continue to push that forward. So congratulations again. I'm very inspired by the work that the youth did. I think they're better artists than I ever was, you know, and more to see. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Love it, love it, love it. Let's take, are we, what are we doing, Councilmember Vang? Mayor Protemp?
Y'all stay in your seat, and we'll take a photo right here.
Okay. Why don't we all stand, stand and, we can all stand and gather closer together.
All the students to the project, all the students and teachers.
Yeah, just squeeze in a little bit more.
Three, two, one, and three, two, one.
Here we go, fit. One, two, and three, one more, one, two, three. Thank you.
Great way to start the meeting. Thank you. Members, and you're all welcome to stay, of course. It gets very interesting. Okay. We have the consent calendar. Members, are there any items that you would like to be discussed or voted upon separately?
I'll move the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Moved and seconded, Vice Mayor Guetta, Councilmember Telemontes. Let us hear from the public on the consent calendar.
Mayor, I have no hands raised to make comments on the consent calendar.
Okay, then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that passes.
Can I say my two eardrums?
So, we have one item on the discussion calendar, but I guess that it has been continued or not? No? No, okay. Item thirteen. No, I'm sorry, I had a note here that it just looks a little different on my agenda. The DOU Designated Reserve Policy, not been canceled.
No pressure, Ryan.
Here we go. Welcome, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, City Councilmember. My name is Ryan Pham, your Business Services Division Manager from the Department of Utility. I'm here to share information, some information about our department reserve policy and ultimately recommend a motion from the City Council to approve it. Today, we will be covering three things: background, reserve fund policy benefits and use, reserve fund levels. A bit of background, DOU identify the need for a long-range financial plan. We partnered with the City Treasury Office to hire Philman, Rolab, and Associate, who is the City Primary Financial Advisor to provide an independent review and recommendation from the industry expert perspective, which includes the creation of the designated reserve fund policy. It should be noted that DOU currently has reserved guideline for 120 days of working capital, and the rate stabilization funds based on the bond covenant. So this reserve policy would formalize and codify the existing guideline while adding a capital reserve to the policy. Additionally, DOU have received support and recommendation from the Budget and Audit Committee to move forward this policy to the City Council for approval. I may go into a little bit of technical detail, so bear with me. The Government Finance Officer Association recommends utilizing reserve funds to provide sources of funding for situation when external forces interrupt a public utility regular operation. DOU reserve policy includes the following designated reserve. One, operating reserve that are established as prudent level as source of funding when expenses are greater than budgeted, or when revenue fall below expectation. Rate stabilization reserves are required in accordance to the debt covenant and can be used to strengthen debt services coverage in years when results are weaker than expected, or as a tool to smooth out rate increases. Capital reserve provide the ability to fund future project from the available cash flow, allows DOU to fund project that would not be funded with a debt proceed, is also can be used to provide immediate funding when project need to be accelerated, or project with cost overrun, as well as unplanned emergencies. This table show the reserve fund minimums and targets recommended by Philman. For the operating reserve, as you can see, a minimum level being in line with the existing DOU reserve practice of 120 days of working capital. DOU intends to continue to achieve 120 days of working capital minimum level to maintain the investment-grade credit ratings for the enterprise system. For the rate stabilization reserve, DOU intends to keep the target consistent with the existing DOU practice adhering to the bond covenant, which is 25% of the maximum annual debt services for each of the respective enterprise system. For capital reserve, DOU intend to set a minimum of one year for capital improvement funding and a target covering the next five fiscal year. This conclude my prepared remarks. Staff are available for any question you may have before your final approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Do we have testimony from the public?
Mayor, I have two hands raised to make comment on this item.
Please.
The first is caller user one.
Yes, this is Lambert. I was really impressed with the presentation of this person for a couple of reasons. One, he mentioned funding, I lost track of how many times, and it shows that funding is vital to whatever it is, whatever it is. And so when I see delays on projects in Del Paso Heights or whatever, it really emphasizes how much people count on funding. And so it's, I consider it a very cruel practice when funding is delayed. So I'm glad, I'm glad this person talked about how vital funding is. He must have said funding about 10 times, because it is vital. That's why you, you stay alive that way, through funding. So whoever this was that just mentioned that, you know, kudos to him. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Desmond Batista. Desmond Batista, if you'll unmute. Estrella Drake.
My name is Estrella Drake, and I speak on behalf of the Front Street Animals. They are now and will be on the future kill list. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the voiceless animal community that are not able to speak to tell you that action speaks louder than words. Why all of you get to go home after this meeting, you will simply forget us because it's not your problem that we are being killed and not given a chance to breathe the air of life that you are breathing. Why? Seventy-nine dogs and many cats haven't executed since you all met the last time, and nothing has been done to save us. Why do you not care about what happens to us? Why is it our fault that God gave us life and you don't care about us? We are, can obviously see that we're not as important to you and just a thing that is disposable and forgotten as you walk away. Stop and look in the mirror and take a look at yourself and say, "Action speaks louder than words." Rough, rough, meow, meow, from the voiceless city of Sacramento Animal Community. And my final word is, "Action speaks louder than words." Do something about it. Stop letting this madness happen at Front Street Animal Shelter. Thank you.
Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Wasn't quite relevant to the topic before us, but okay. Appreciate the public calling in. All right, so again, maybe just for the public to hear one more time, the difference between the current reserve policy and what's being proposed now.
Again, Mayor, as I mentioned, it's just codified it, it allow us to put things in writing, so when we deal with the public, the financial environment, it demonstrates your leadership and
Got it.
It is also allow us to set some money aside for emergency that we just experienced earlier.
It's been the practice, and now we're codifying it.
Thank you.
Right, very good, thank you.
Yes.
I know you said it, I just wanted it to be reiterated in case there was any misunderstanding. Okay, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna acknowledge and thank Ryan and his team and Pravina for all the great presentation at Budget and Audit, and I think that the point was made here, but, and to my understanding is, we've also never fallen below the 120-day period as well, so we've been able to manage that policy. But this helps us with bonding out, making sure that we have something in place so that we get better ratings in the future. Not that we haven't done anything, but it's more about us being able to move forward. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. That passes unanimously. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Really good job. All right, members, that is the formal agenda for this evening. Is there public testimony on items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I do, I do have. Mayor, I do have hands raised. The first is Julie Verga.
Good evening. Thank you for taking my call. I just wanted to point out that since Fix Front Street was there December 13th to talk about what was going on at Front Street, 79 dogs have been killed, and again, that was December 13th, 79 dogs have been killed and 49 cats. I know that we've had some good meetings with council members, but we hope to bring to everyone's attention, all city leaders and all city council members, that we have an urgent crisis, an urgent crisis at Front Street. They're now killing dogs for space, they're not making any secret of it, it's completely overcrowded, there are so many solutions that are not being utilized. I'd like to bring to your attention right now that we have secured a surgical spay-neuter team ready to start immediately. We will send that information to you tomorrow. They can work at the shelter, there are many, many animals that have not been spayed and neutered, they can't be adopted, they can't go to foster, they can't go to rescue, and it's wreaking havoc at the shelter. Female dogs in heat and unneuter male dogs, it's not a good situation. It causes extreme behavioral issues. We have trainers, dog handlers, and behaviorists ready to start working with the animals at the shelters, at the shelter who just need a little work. They're sweet, they're not aggressive, they just need a little work. We have volunteers ready to assist foster coordination and outreach. Right now, there's 318 animals they say are in foster care, only 39 are adoptable. Additionally, we have volunteers for almost every position there and every need. There are people who want to help, please let us. Please be the voice for those that have none. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And our meeting moved too quickly, I forgot protocol. We do have speakers in chambers. So Marbella Sala, Caesar Nelson, Manana Yamamonda, and then Sanja Singh. Marbella?
Marbella.
Aye, thank you. And it's Marbella Sala.
Aye, thank you.
And first of all, I just want to say that this is my first time speaking in front of all you, in front of five women sitting in City Council, and my newly-elected City Councilwoman Telemontes. So I'm really pleased to be in front of you. And also, thank you all for appointing me to continue on Measure U. That being said, I'm speaking on behalf of Measure U as a member of Measure U, and I just want to, and I'm sure you received letters already, so I'm just going to say kind of what's in the letters, and that is the cancellation of our Measure U meeting yesterday. Needless to say, it was a surprise to us that it was canceled. It was done less than seven days before our meeting. We were already in, thinking about what, who was, we were going to elect as our chair, and there was different things in the works that we were going to tackle yesterday. It was canceled. All of us at first thought it was canceled because we didn't have a quorum of our existing members to sit on, at the meeting, only to find out that it was an arbitrary decision based on an interpretation of your policy that says, "We, members, when they expire, may continue to sit until such time there is a newly-appointed member." May, shall, I mean, plain on words, in my opinion, is always a way to keep certain people out and keep certain people in. So that was never discussed with us. In November was our last meeting, we all thought that we would continue to be on Measure U until our new appointees took their seats. No one told us, no one discussed it with us. Even if that was an interpretation of policy, there should have been, for the sake of transparency, some kind of discussion with us.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Caesar Nelson. And following Caesar is Manana Yanamandra.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Vice Mayor. I'm here regarding a, first, I want to say this. I'd like to give thanks to Doug Pierce and Erin Gildersleeve of the I'd like to give thanks to Doug Pierce and Aaron Gildersleeve of the Housing and Vacant Department there for assisting me and other associates in resolving a problem of a nuisance going on. So they came out and they were really good at what to do and how to do it and things of that sort. Number two is, is why I'm here, is that your office, Mayor Steinberg and Councilman Sean Loebi, have taken the point to speak about the water that was shut off at my house when I got one of these notices, 62722. I was surprised, and then you get one of these notices saying that the leak is in your backyard, which there was no leak in my backyard. What I was questioning about is that no one ever investigated the leak in the alley or anything of that sort, or to test the water meter itself, if it was broken or whatever it could be. But anyway, I thank you, your office, Mayor Steinberg, and Councilman Sean Loebi, for taking up the stand on it. So I haven't had any results, no water's on yet. So anyway, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes. Thank you very much. We spoke, and I'll make sure someone from my office or myself will reach out to you by tomorrow to get to the bottom of this. I know my staff is working on this because I'm in the loop, but I don't know the, all the details, but I'll definitely make sure somebody contacts you tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember, Mayor, Assistant City Manager Michael Jassal will speak with the gentleman on the way out. His code enforcement under his purview.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Assistant City Manager.
Next speaker is Manya Yanamandra.
My name is Manya Yanamandra. I'm an eighth grade student and a volunteer at Hindu Swam Sevak Sang HSS. The 18th Annual Health for Humanity Yoga-thon, or Surya Namaskar Yajna, organized by the Hindu Swam Sevak Sang, started on January 14th. The 16-day event aims to create awareness about yoga and its advantages in achieving a healthy body, mind, and spirit. Surya Namaskar integrates simple yoga postures and 10 steps that, along with simple breathing techniques, can provide immense health benefits to both the body and the mind. Each year on January 14th, Hindus worldwide celebrate Makrsang Karanti, a day that marks the changing of the seasons. Makrsang Karanti occurs in longer days, which is why the festival symbolizes sunshine and life. To mark this occasion, HSS has organized the Health for Humanity Yoga-thon from January 14th to January 23rd, 2023. HSS initiated this health awareness project in 2007. Now it's in its 18th year. Since its inception, participants of all faiths and beliefs from 43 different states have actively taken part in the Yoga-thon through yoga centers, community organizations, schools, and colleges. Collectively, we have participated in and performed over 4 million Surya Namaskars. Community leaders and elected officials across the nation have shown their appreciation for this initiative and encouraged their residents to participate and gain the benefits of an overall healthy lifestyle. This year, HSS invites community groups, yoga centers, students, and individuals to learn and participate in the Health for Humanity Yoga-thon. This program is open to people of all ages, genders, races, and we aspire to collaborate with the city as much as possible to reach out to members of our community. Our goal is to get as many people as we can from our city to reap benefits of this initiative.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Were you almost done?
Yeah.
Just, I'm gonna, chair's discretion.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Namaste, have a great day.
Thank you for coming to the city council and telling us, okay? We really appreciate it. Please keep coming.
Next speaker is Sanjana Singh. And then we'll go online to Mr. Davis, and then Elsie.
Namaste, dear Mayor and City Council members of Sacramento. My name is Sanjana, a member of the Hindu Swam Sevak Sang HSS. I am an eighth grader. I would like to briefly share information about the recently concluded Seva Dhwali food donation drive with you. During the holiday season, the need for everyone to come together and help those in need and eliminate the hunger caused by COVID, food shortages, and the rising food prices has increased now more than ever. Chances are, you have heard about Dhwali, also known as the Festival of Lights, which falls in the months of October or November. During the celebration of Dhwali, all thermic organizations collectively host Seva Dhwali. Seva Dhwali is an initiative coordinated nationally by HSS, which allows individuals, communities, and organizations who believe in the Seva Dharma to come together across the United States. The Seva Dharma essentially means, "Service to humanity is service to divinity." In other words, it means to give back to the society which we live in during the Festival of Dhwali. As part of Seva Dhwali, we collected non-perishable food items and donated them to local food pantries, shelters, and to people in need. We are pleased to share that this year, more than 95 volunteers in greater Sacramento, Yuba City, and around the Chico area from 33 local organizations, joined hands, collected 8,500 pounds of food in 19 cities, and donated to 14 food banks in six countries, including 1,325 pounds of food to Lowe's and Fitch's Sacramento. To promote community awareness, we had a Seva Dhwali car parade where people decorated cars with lights and drove around the city of Sacramento. This was a unique way to celebrate the Festival of Lights while also sharing the message of giving back to the community. Seva Dhwali is a national initiative. In 2022 alone, the Seva Dhwali program donated 630,000 pounds of food to over 200 beneficiary organizations. This donation will serve over 525,000 meals. This was possible by people and organizations coming together in 200 cities and townships in 2022.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is online, Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, if you'll unmute.
Yes, I hope the mayor and also city councilmen, LaLoli, listen to this because this is a shout-out to you. Three weeks ago, the Grant High School Pacers football team was honored in your chamber, and they and their parents and some of the coaches invited me and my family to come there, and I was there. And the first thing I noticed was when the mayor walked into the chamber, he got a tremendous round of applause by the football players. Why? Because they see him at different events in Del Paso Heights. And the reason I'm sending a shout-out to Mr. LaLoli is I know he cares about them and he cares about the drum line. Now, I want to say something to you, Mayor. This is something that's serious now. They all approached me privately and told me that they're pushing the cheesecakes through social media. I have no idea what that means. I'm a baby boomer. But I do know one thing. This weekend, this past weekend, before, during, and after the 49ers victory, it got back to me that our cheesecakes went viral in the Bay Area. So I would expect the city manager's office, they have about five divisions, and also District Two, to reach out to us because we're bringing positiveness to the city of Sacramento, all over Sacramento now. Inside Sacramento Magazine did a wonderful article on us in December. And so we're known now, and we're using our own money. We shouldn't have to do that. We have everything we need to get funding. So I hope that someone's gonna be reaching out to us because these young people have taken us viral. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Elise.
Hi, so we've spoken a lot about animal services. Today, I want to speak about animal control response or lack thereof. There have been several responses by various members of Front Street. Director Zimmerman, one of the managers, Ryan Hinderman, who is often in the media, as well as the Chief Animal Control Officer, Jace Huggins. All of them say, on a daily basis, they are sitting on 500 to 600 calls. I call that into question for the following reason. In 2021, their impact report said they received 15,000 calls annually, not responded to, but received. This past summer, Jace Huggins had a bio for another board position where he said they received 16,000 calls annually. If we take the 16,000, you're looking at about 44 calls per day. So my question number one would be, how is it okay for them to be sitting on over 10 times the amount of the daily calls they get, and that's acceptable? Number two, there are several items that they don't even respond to at all. It's just a simple letter sent out, like a barking complaint or a feces complaint, as well as, they never respond to dogs at large. And that should be a huge concern, especially in Councilmember LaLoli's district, where you have a large amount of animals at large, which can pass on disease to both other animals as well as humans, such as a common condition of Giardia. That can be passed on human. So I think that this is important, that animal services gets completely under control on all levels, but you certainly need to look into those numbers for their responses.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Claudia Cardoza.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, City Council and Vice Mayor. I'm here to advocate also for the animals and with respect to bring some awareness on respects to the animal services departments. Last month in the meeting, I brought up the issue about training and guidelines in 311, you know, training development. I believe there's lack of, and there has to be some kind of accountability towards that. I heard the last speaker talk about, you know, the responses about animal control, and that is an issue, especially with large dogs. And yes, the transmittable disease into humans and other animals as Giardia. I do have something to mention about that as an experience. We had a dog that we rescued in December from a neglected situation. It was brought into Front Street for checkup, where they did checkup, took x-rays and all of this. What did not happen was that they did not want it to release the medical notes that this dog, whatever they had done to this dog. This dog is Bella, which I'm going to keep saying her name because, like I said, it's not acceptable what happened to her. She was released to us, to the public, with Giardia, which is a transmittable disease. We did not get medical notes until two, three days later because we kept pushing for it. Now, by that time, we had asked for fosters, and they already had infected another family. This was, is not acceptable. It should not happen, and it should have been accountability in Department of, you know, Front Street, how they handle this kind of things. What kind of dogs are you releasing into the community? What kind of checkup are you really, I mean, do you really care for the people that are sponsoring you? That's my last comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Cindy Tarazas. Cindy, you appear unmuted. It's your time to present to the council. Mayor, I believe Cindy's having technical difficulties.
Okay, I'm sorry. We'll go to council ideas and questions. If we can get her back on to conclude the meeting, we will. I have an adjourned memory, and I'll do that last. I'll first turn it over to Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, we talked to you about coyote shakers, and we had a very informative meeting, and we made lots of coyote shakers, and now we have the ability to scare those coyotes away from our family and our friends. So that was last week. This week, I want to invite you to the Lewis Park Tree Planting on February 4th at 9:00 a.m. It'll go from 9:00 to 12:00. If you've watched what's happened with the weather, between the wind, the rain, and all that, we've got a lot of trees that have fallen down. And so with those trees falling down, it's time for us to start planting again. So with weather providing, we're gonna go to Lewis Park to plant trees. Lewis Park is located at 6570 Park Riviera Way. All the tools will be supplied, so all you need to do is bring your incredible work ethic, wear your sunscreen and appropriate clothing. The Sacramento Tree Foundation will be out there with the city of Sacramento and District Seven in order to plant as many trees as we can get in Lewis Park. So I invite you to come on out and have a good time, and we're gonna have a great crowd. Talk to you then.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Talamantes.
I just want to congratulate my three new commissioners that we passed on the consent calendar, including Marbella Sala, who's Measure U, Julio Lamas, who's my new planning commissioner, and Kira Baltisa, who's my new arts commissioner. And so getting fully staffed, and I'm really excited for District Three.
Wonderful. Good people. Councilmember Maple.
Yes, I just wanted to share, this is another hat that I wear in addition to being on the city council, along with some of my colleagues. I also sit on the Sacramento Regional Transit Board, and there's a really exciting opportunity that I would like the community to know about that's coming up on Wednesday, January 25th this week. It's on Zoom at 6:00 p.m. until 7:30, and it's the bus stop improvement plan. So this is a really great opportunity for the community to come in and share their comments, their ideas, their questions, their concerns about their bus stops and how they can be improved. And I really believe in lifting community up and make sure that they're a part of the process. So if you can show up, it's on Zoom. You can find more information on the SACRT website, or you can go on our social media. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to invite all of my fellow council members and your furry friends. I am hosting my first event on February 11th at the North Natomas Regional Park from 9:00 to 12:00. We are partnering with PetSmart and several of our local shelters. We will have various animals up for adoption, which if you follow me on social media, soon we will start posting pictures of furry friends that you can adopt. But also, if you're interested in becoming a foster family, come out and learn about that process and sign up. We will also have local vendors, because I know we all need cute items for our dogs and cats. We will have local vendors there, as well as an animal adorable kissing booth for donation, a small donation that will go to our, some of our rescue shelters. You can bring your own cat, dog, guinea pig, hamster, come take a picture. But we will also have, our SACPD canine unit will be joining us in doing demonstrations, and we'll put out a list at certain times. PetSmart will, if you need help getting your dog to sit, come and take the small little training that PetSmart will provide. But more importantly, how can you not have fun when you bring your pets out? So come take a walk about, around North Natomas in our regional park on Saturday, February 11th.
Thank you all very much. I'd like to adjourn in memory tonight, and this is maybe a little bit different because this rising Sacramento leader passed away about five years ago. But today, January 24th, would have been Ali Yusefi's 40th birthday. And those of us who knew Ali, knew what a special person he was and what a special family he has. Ali was everything that we aspired to be about Sacramento. He believed that Sacramento could be a more cosmopolitan city. He believed deeply in inclusion, both economic inclusion and the inclusion of all, our diversity in Sacramento. He was a pioneer around affordable housing, especially middle-income housing in the downtown and the midtown. And his legacy continues as the 1717 S Project, known as Ari's Place, positively impacts many Sacramentoans. I just wanted to take a moment to remember him. And he was 35 years old when he passed away of cancer, very, way too young, and had so much more to offer. But to Ali's family, to Ozzy, to his parents, to all of his family, be assured that he will never be forgotten, and we remember his work. Thank you very much. If there's nothing else to come before the city council, we are adjourned.